Hey, we'll go ahead and bring the city council meeting in order. I'd first like to ask everyone to stand and join in deciding a pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So else, can you please do your roll call?
Craig Koshaw?
Here.
Matt Dyer?
Here.
Tyler Forman-Camp?
Here.
Scott Murray?
Here.
Wiley Surratt?
Here. Um, were you guys all given a chance to read the minutes from the previous meeting in May?
Make a motion except them as emailed.
I'll second that.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Vote same side? Okay. Okay, I see a new face in here. Kim Brant's here with us. Uh, Jamie, you want to get up and talk a little bit?
Yes.
This is our new director.
Yeah, this is Kim Brant, and she is the director of the Hive. She has been in the position for about a month now, sir. And she has really, you know, been a go-getter with everything, taken a lot of initiatives, talked to different residents and organizations to see what events they would like to go on at the Hive. And she's been getting it ready for the Decatur Sculpture Tour this Friday, and then she also has an event next Friday. Um, it's a pizza and a painting class, and a lot more on the horizon.
Yep, yep. I'm excited to see Kim in there. She's, uh, she's really hit the ground running. I've been down there a few times, and she's been busy. She's wanting to add shelves and do things, and she's excited to be in there, so, uh, I'm happy she's on board. Anybody have any questions for her?
I just watched on Facebook.
Yeah, trying to get their words out that we're here asking around, well, which I can see in the Hive, people are like, "What's the Hive?" "Is that four rings?" Like, no, that's here in the Hive.
It's a good professional presence, though. It looks good.
Thank you.
Keep it up.
Yeah. I'm having lots of heart of it, and it's full now, uh, with, you know, walls are pretty full. Dale White's gonna finish up Thursday, so if you come in Friday, Thursday night or Friday, you should, there's a lot to look at in the Hive.
And Friday during the sculpture tour events, uh, the plein air art contest will be going on during the day. Um, that, that's a really cool event. Um, people sit around all over town and paint their perspective from where they're at in the community. Um, there are some amazing talents around here, so if you get a chance, I think it's, the paintings will be in there from about four to seven, or, Gene, you might know, is it four to seven or 7:30?
Yeah.
And they'll all be for sale?
For sale, but you don't have to shit on stuff.
That's right. So if you're in here, if you're around town Friday, come on up.
On the seventeenth is the pizza taste-off between Vinnie's and Monster Pizza, so it's your chance to get both at once. A twelve buck ticket or ten bucks if you stand for the game five. I mean, we're not gonna give a big kiss like that.
I'm a professional at half of that, through the pizza part, so.
I, I just wanted to say that, uh, one of my very best buds in life is Rick McCoy, he was a director in Van Works County, and she was 911 director there and worked with him, and he was always so high on her and so thankful for her. So we've got somebody that's got really some good backing on what she's done.
Thanks for that.
Good. And it's nice to drive by and cheer you on.
That's right, that's right. All right, well, thanks, and welcome forward. You don't have to stick around if you don't want, but thanks for coming up, appreciate it.
I'll see you sometime soon.
Okay. Okay, um, we're going to do the resolution for adopting a plan for distributions received from the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021, state and local fiscal recovery funds.
The previous meeting, um, council did approve to put, uh, $450,000 for park improvement and $295,150 for sanitation department improvement into the plan, um, with to use the ARPA money to pay for that.
Which resolution number is this?
Nine.
Is it 10?
Nine.
Nine?
Uh-huh.
Hmm, okay.
I make a, then I make a motion to, um, introduce Resolution 2022-9, uh, by short title only.
I'll second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Vote.
Resolution number 2022-9, a resolution of the common council of the City of Decatur adopting a plan for distributions received from the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021, state and local fiscal recovery funds.
Reason I was hesitant, I had Les Markle's resolution as 2022-9.
It had to be changed, yeah. And I can dance about it, I changed it.
Yeah, Les was moved to eight.
Yeah.
Yep. I have redevelopment fund as eight. Unless I'm wrong.
Yeah, that is, this appropriation is number eight, and then nine is this one.
What's this?
Seven.
Oh, seven, okay. So which is seven? Les Markle's is seven.
Yes.
Okay. Because I do have a empty spot there.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks for keeping that on track.
Yeah.
Uh-huh.
Okay. All right, so then I will, uh, make a motion to pass Resolution 2022-dash-nine. Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Vote, same sign?
Do you want this resolution for additional appropriations?
Just sign one copy.
Um, no, it's a public hearing, and then we'll do the rest.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, we have second thought to enter a public hearing for additional appropriations for the general fund and the ARPA Coronavirus Local Fiscal Recovery Grant Fund, so. I'm going to motion to suspend this meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second to suspend the council meeting, all in favor?
Aye.
Vote, same sign?
Motion of public hearing.
Second.
Motion second to open the public hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
Vote, same sign? Okay.
Okay, this is an additional appropriations for the general fund and the ARPA Coronavirus Local Fiscal Recovery Grant Fund, um, in order to use the money in the ARPA fund, um, we had to do additional appropriations that wasn't appropriated into the budget, and that's $745,150. And that would go for the park improvements that were in the fiscal plan and the sanitation department improvements of $295,150. And then they also, um, for the garbage trash cans, um, to make the first lease payment of $65,062 that is due August 1st for, and for the duck trailer and recycle bins, and that is paid out in the general fund. If anyone, does the public have any comments about the additional appropriations?
So basically, this money was part of the ARPA funds money from the federal government, um, and since that money wasn't officially in your budget for the year, every bit of that money has to be made an additional appropriation, so that's where we're at with this.
Thank you. Please stand.
Any questions? Seeing none?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion second to close the public hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
Vote, same sign?
Motion to reopen the council meeting.
Second.
Motion second to reopen the council meeting, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Vote, same sign? Okay, so now we have a resolution for approval of additional appropriations.
What number is that?
It'll be passed.
Be 10. Right.
Resolution?
Resolution number 2022-10.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to introduce Resolution 2022-10.
By short title.
By short title only, thank you.
I'll second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Vote, same sign?
Resolution 2022-10, additional appropriations for the general fund and the ARPA Coronavirus Local Fiscal Recovery Grant Fund.
Make a motion to pass Resolution 2022-10.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Vote, same sign?
Okay, the public hearing was published in the newspaper, I just need to make a little matter of record.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second to make this a matter of record, all in favor?
Aye.
Vote, same sign? Okay. Well, might as well stay hot with ordinances and resolutions, huh? Um, we have an ordinance introduced for water rate changes, adjustments due to elimination of the utility receipt tax.
Do you want to go or do you want to go?
I can.
I can go, too.
Go ahead.
Uh, back in March, the Indiana legislators decided to repeal the utility receipt tax. The utilities have to pay, uh, based on their revenues, um, the 1.4% tax that we pay yearly, it's anywhere from thirty to fifty thousand dollars, depending on the revenues that year. They decided to repeal that tax, so our rates, um, figure in all taxes, bonds, payments that we have to make throughout the year, so that is figured in, and we have to make that payment yearly, so then we were required to adjust rates now that we don't have to make that payment. So it is a big adjustment, um, minimum bills inside the city will drop about twenty-nine cents a month. Um, outside the city, it'll be closer to thirty cents. The way it is required by the state to go through this process to reveal these out of our rates and.
But the legislatures could say they lowered your taxes.
Yes, they will say they've made a tax decrease, and everyone's gonna say about twenty cents a month.
They did.
So, that's where we're at.
Okay.
So, yeah, that's, that's where we're at, so we have, we have the ordinance, and then, you know, we'll have to have a public hearing next meeting to, because of the rate change, and we'll have to send letters out to any outside users, um, file some legal notice.
So you, you have to send the letters to the outside users, even though it's a decrease?
Yeah. If there's any rate change, you have to let the outside water users know via letter.
Okay, even if it's a decrease, okay.
No, any kind of rate change, you have to follow the same exact process.
Okay.
Is this Resolution 2022-9?
It is.
Or, or.
Ordinance, I'm sorry, yeah. I've got, ordinance.
You've got resolution on your mind?
Yes, so, um.
-9.
Correct. Okay, let's, uh, make a motion to place ordinance 2022-9 on its first reading by short title only.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Vote, same sign?
Ordinance number 2022-9, an ordinance of the common council of the City of Decatur, Indiana, which establishes amended rates and charges for the use of and the service rendered by the Decatur Water System.
Motion to pass ordinance 2022-9 on its first reading.
I'll second.
Motion second, roll call vote?
Craig Koshaw?
Yes.
Matt Dyer?
Yes.
Tyler Forman-Camp?
Yes.
Scott Murray?
Yes.
Wiley Surratt?
Yes. Make a motion, uh, to place ordinance 2022-9 on its second reading by short title only.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Vote, same sign?
Ordinance number 2022-9, an ordinance of the common council of the City of Decatur, Indiana, which establishes amended rates and charges for the use of and the service rendered by the Decatur Water System.
Make a motion to pass ordinance 2022-9 on its second reading.
Second.
Motion second, roll call vote?
Craig Koshaw?
Yes.
Matt Dyer?
Yes.
Tyler Forman-Camp?
Yes.
Scott Murray?
Yes.
Wiley Surratt?
Yes. Typically, we would place this, table this on reading.
This would need to be tabled, there needs to be a public hearing, which will be scheduled for the next council meeting.
So I will make a motion to table ordinance 2022-9 for its third reading on, uh, see that would be?
June 21st.
June 21st.
I'll second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Vote, same sign?
Thanks.
Thanks, Governor.
[inaudible]
Okay, we have a tax abatement request from Hoosier Patter.
Thank you, I'm here today representing Hoosier Patter, who's a faculty here, and, um, unfortunately, Keith couldn't be here today because of a previously scheduled vacation. He did write out a statement, and I have made that available to you by email, and a hard copy. He would be able to answer any questions, I'm sure, um, in a lot more detail than that. I would be able to, but they are asking for a tax abatement for both personal property and real estate, and, um, we would be happy to answer questions, I know, a lot of it will be, um, silos to store sand in, so they can bring sand in by rail, um, building in other building to store tractors and trucks and equipment in, instead of leaving it out, they run out of room, and they will be putting another building up. I will let Melissa speak a little bit more about the personal property equipment, um, so if you have questions, I think she will be able to answer, answer those. What we've done, I'm sure Keith has talked about the printers that we use, we're trying to actually streamline that a little bit more, so from those silos that we'll add, that will receive the sand from the rail, that'll then go through that sand reclaiming system that, that we're on the last abatement, and then we'll actually use internal transport to transport those directly to each sand printer, so that they can be used. That eliminates moving that back and forth, it just streamlines the process a great deal. We've also added and upgraded some internal equipment, grinders, um, there's a, um, a Deuson virgin mill that's coming, or mill that's coming, and it'll actually allow us capacity increases to be able to, to improve the products that we offer and be able to produce product that we could not previously.
These improvements are expected to add additional five jobs, um, to the facility. I thought something that was pretty interesting in Keith's thing, I hope you guys picked up on it, but, um, labor is hard to come by these days, and some of these improvements are going to look more efficient, um, and so even though they're adding five positions, it will be an efficiency saver, I guess, because it is having our time, um, filling jobs as we have, so, I think I should tell them that it's coming double.
And currently, um. Any job that we streamline will allow a person to be trained to do something else and help in another area.
Right.
Do you use rail now to get any supplies, is all new process?
This is all new, correct? This will be a completely new venture.
Interesting.
And it's great, because it runs right behind the building, I'm actually very excited. Everything's trapped in there.
What, what's your request? Are you asking for 10, 5, what are you wanting?
10, 10 years, I'm old.
On, on the depreciation on the, on the, uh, real estate, is that at, at 15, is that what that usually is?
Most of it at 30.
30, okay, and then on the equipment?
Uh, anywhere between 7 and 15.
Okay. You know what kind of deduction this would be in taxes for this abatement?
You'd actually need that.
Or, I mean, your savings, sorry?
Did you talk to Colton?
Over the 10 years?
No, I could do a little research and talk to Colton, but now I haven't.
Typically, in past property, has, in five years, as opposed to 10, is that correct? With different, with different manufacturers?
Yeah, some are five years, and some are seven, and some are 10.
Okay.
Whoa, what was the most recent one we did on?
Um, I think it may have been Rev.
It was Rev, but theirs was 10.
Okay. I mean, there's no doubt what Keith's doing and wanting to do is great, you know, we're just trying to bear it out, like, what precedent have we set in treating fair, you know, to his proposal as well as others that have been before us? Kurt?
Um, it's been a couple weeks since I talked to Keith. Last time I talked to him, he still had some issues, he, he's been so off railway. Uh, do you know if he's got those worked out yet?
I know they were discussing those.
Does that affect where?
That's for the silos, right?
Right.
He came with them silos where he wants them, the railcar is not going to work for a while. I, I just want to make sure he got that, he got that squirt away with AEP. I mean, we, we met with Brad, and I was out there with Keith, and AEP engineer for one day, and he, he was pretty sure that there wasn't going to be a problem, and then Keith called me a couple days later and said, "Somebody higher up," and that was like, "Oh."
Right.
And to my knowledge at this moment, it's not a problem with that.
Okay. It was again, a couple months ago back?
The last.
This, this one, okay.
Yeah, I think, um, the last abatement was 2019. That was the same week, like, five or so.
Okay. Right. I know he came, he came for the BZA recently, for setbacks, because he needed a variance for the silo, and all the railroad tracks, a little side yard setback.
I believe that, that may have happened in, in March, mid-March.
Well, that was a BZA meeting after, after we had the meeting with AEP, and they, at that point in time, everything was going to go according to the AEP engineer. Since the BZA meeting after we used, and all this came about again, I mean, my thing, their reason is used, because it was right through, they'll, they'll never use it.
Right, it's right through the facility.
It's right through the facility, and they'll never use that.
It's just, they, they need to abandon it.
They were kind of right, you know, they don't want to damage it.
So, uh, so we did it for Rev, was for 10 years, he said, the pre, do you have the previous one before that or not?
Uh, it was 10.
And that was for equipment for 10 years? Is there any other real estate one that you tied in?
Yeah, Doc, Doc wrote it. Yeah. Rev was 10, 10 for personal, 10 for real estate. Local packaging was 10 for real estate, 7 for personal property. And then Hoosier Patter was 10 years for real estate, 10 for personal.
That's what's a little confusing to me, why they're different. Is it just that's what they asked for? I think several years ago, we had this, I think I had a conversation at one point in time that we need to set some guidance, but then it never got accomplished, so I think what happens is every business comes in here and asks for the Scott, they, they want the top of the limit to get the discount that they can get, or the savings they can get, and we've never really set a.
I'm at 80, then I went 5, so I was saving first time.
We've never really set a guidance. I think this was used to attract new business at one point in time, but I think businesses have found a way to use it as a way to.
Grow.
Grow and save on taxes. I mean, I can't blame a business for wanting to save some money, but they come in front of us all the time, and then we keep, because we have no system in place for what goes where. But it is a two-way deal, they make promises and they live up to them, or we don't grant it yearly at their renewal process, because we've pulled them in pre, in recent years. How long is it going to take for the construction process to get this thing up and rolling, and where you can actually utilize it and hire the five employees?
Well, hiring the five employees, bigger problem, finding the five employees, to be honest, we, we hire them tomorrow, but to find them.
Okay.
Um, it, it will be a staggered process, the rail will take longer, we are working out the pneumatic system that will bring it from the railcar into the building, the silos are there, they're working, um, they've got the, um, the drawings ready to, to start those foundations and, and look at that, but, but you're looking at, at several months to be able to get those replaced completely.
Okay.
And that's if we don't hit any drawbacks that we can't proceed right now.
Okay. I'll make a motion to move forward with this tax abatement, because we'll have to have a public hearing at the next meeting, correct?
Yes.
So at that point, we can set the parameters. Well, they could still be changed at that point, until we, until we get to that point.
Yeah, that's, would, after this, that would be the next discussion, that we need to begin to pursue having concrete, detailed guidelines, and, uh, that, that we're fair then to, to everyone that comes forward here.
Make a motion, second. Motion move forward, basically, with the abatement, I'll second that.
So, motion second to move forward with the abatement, any other discussion? The public hearing will be scheduled for, in two weeks, is that?
Well, if you pass the motion to move forward with it, you'd also need to, um, entertain a motion or approve a motion for a declaratory resolution, and then that, but that would include identification of a period of time or any kind of limitations on an abatement, and then once that has been approved, then it would be scheduled for a public hearing at our next council meeting.
After the public hearing, can that, the resolution?
It can, yeah.
So it's not into effect until after the public hearing?
The declaratory resolution essentially identifies the property as, as being in an economic revitalization area and qualifying it to, um, the petition and the request as such as being appropriate for an abatement, and it identifies, um, what kind of an abatement the council is considering, but it's not set in stone, and it may be modified prior to a confirming resolution.
My motion will stand, then.
Okay, motion second, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Vote, same sign?
Could you get with Colton and email, have him email me the savings over the 10 years, please?
So, there still needs to be a declaratory resolution.
So this would be Resolution 2022-11?
It, the wire, and at least in, is, was yours, what was your period of time, or did you identify? It, wire, and at least in, was yours, what was your period of time or did you identify a period of time?
He said after the public hearing.
What?
He said after the public hearing, if we can get that in the newsroom, right, which would be what, next, the 21st?
A declaratory resolution identifies a period of time for an abatement, but it can be modified after a public hearing prior to a confirming resolution. So you first would identify a declaratory resolution.
What they're asking for.
Yes.
10 and 10, but it could be modified after the public hearing and discussion. And I'd like to see kind of back five-year history on what have we done for others?
So was your motion intent for 10 and 10?
Are you telling, are you saying that we?
You said you wanted to move forward with it. Council agrees that you want to move forward with the tax. I would entertain a motion to approve a declaratory resolution. It would be number 2022-10?
Dash 11.
Dash 11. My goodness, sorry. That would be for Hoosier Pattern for both personal property and real property. But within that resolution, it's blank on the number of years that the abatement would be effective. So that would need to be identified first and added into and included as part of that declaratory resolution.
I guess my motion is to keep the process rolling, but I would like more information. So if it's going to be more of an issue to change that at the public hearing?
Counsel also has the option to take the matter under advisement and table it for the rest of this evening and seek out additional information. Want to keep the process moving forward, you have the ability to do that while not approving a declaratory resolution too.
That would be easier legal wise, is what you're saying?
It's your call, both are available to you. You make the declaratory resolution, this is essentially what you're saying should happen and evidence otherwise or information otherwise at a public hearing, harder to move away from that, but.
I think I'd rather table it, it sounds like it's more of a simpler route if I, I'd like to see the information first before I make a final decision, I guess, so.
So you're rescinding the motion?
I'll just make a motion to table it to the next meeting. I never really made a motion, I guess, my motion was pointless before because I didn't introduce the resolution, so. And basically said I didn't mean anything the first time.
All right.
Then I'll second to table.
So motion is second to table this till the next meeting. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close, same sign? Okay. So we'll table it until declaratory resolution. We need to do that in the next meeting.
Correct.
Before the public hearing.
Right, you're not going to schedule a public hearing without a declaratory resolution would be passed. That would trigger scheduling the public hearing. So they'll take it, council will take this under advisement, you'll table this, this matter, and then on June 21st, the motion to consider a declaratory resolution for Hoosier Pattern's tax abatement would be, would be brought back up for discussion. No vote.
All right, thank you. Okay, now we have flood hazard area ordinance amendments. Kurt, was that you? For Ian?
It's both. Poor Erin Hairely, she and Kurt.
This was a total, total overhaul of the flood. We're getting audited on the 24th of this month to see if we can keep our current rating for our flood insurance or whether we can jump up. One of the conditions was we had to adopt this new ordinance that the state actually wrote for us. But we had a lot of other amendments in there that were for the, how would I say, were more stringent. So Erin had to go, we went through it, I don't know how many times, four or five times, she already wrote it.
Right.
So it's just, it's a total overhaul, there's definitions that were added, actually some of the definitions, I'm still arguing with FEMA over it. What we have at 20 to 90 is what we're going on about.
It is an amendment of the existing Chapter 155 of the Code of Ordinances. This has been something that Erin Hairely has been in close contact with DNR and FEMA representatives. And every time we would send them a draft, it seemed like it got put in front of a different person. And so new names and comments and red lines kept coming back. And it's been a process. And she, and kudos to Erin because she's been really diligent with working with DNR and getting this to the point it is. But much of, much of the work within this chapter has to go into the definitions. It is, it is not affecting the, essentially the flood, the overall map, the flood hazard area, it's not affecting any kind of fees, rates, or any kind of penalties or any kind of, I don't want to say substance because that's not the right word, but there's a lot of technical aspects that were adjusted, but there are not any kind of rate increases or penalties or fines or fees that are associated with it, so.
Is there more limitation than one?
No, I don't think there's more limitation, there's just more detailed definitions, more definitions added. I do know this, if we don't adopt this ordinance, we will lose our rating. And we're currently at an eight, it'll take us to a nine, which a nine is a bare minimum for the program. Actually, we're hoping we can get better rating to go to a seven. The rating that we have currently depicts what insurance rates would be for citizens in Decatur, this flood prone area.
Right.
So by doing what we do, we're already saving them three times the money.
Right.
If we didn't have this program, they'd be paying about three times more than what they are now.
So all this work basically is helping any residents that have flood insurance.
Exactly.
Keep their rates down.
Hopefully, if we get a better rating, we'll get over that even more.
Is it ordinance number 10? Is that what it is?
Yes. So at this time, we entertain a motion to consider ordinance 2022-10.
Okay, I'll make a motion to place ordinance 2022-10 on its first reading by short title only.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, same sign?
Ordinance 2022-10, an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Decatur, Indiana, which amends Chapter 155 of the Decatur Code of Ordinances of 2015 as supplemented regarding flood hazard areas.
Make a motion to pass ordinance 2022-10 on its first reading.
Second.
Motion is second. Roll call, vote?
Craig Koshel?
Yes.
Matt Dyer?
Yes.
Tyler Forman?
Yes.
Scott Murray?
Yes.
Wiley Surratt?
Yes. Make a motion to place ordinance 2022-10 on its second reading by short title only.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, same sign?
Ordinance 2022-10, an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Decatur, Indiana, which amends Chapter 155 of the Decatur Code of Ordinances of 2015 as supplemented regarding flood hazard areas.
Make a motion to pass ordinance 2022-10 on its second reading.
Second.
Motion is second. Roll call, vote?
Craig Koshel?
Yes.
Matt Dyer?
Yes.
Tyler Forman?
Yes.
Scott Murray?
Yes.
Wiley Surratt?
Yes. I'll make a motion to table ordinance 2022-10 for its third reading on June 21st. Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, same sign? Okay. We have a discussion over Merit Center floor cleaner. You guys are both on the Merit Center board?
Yeah, we had talked to the janitorial people and got a lot of square footage to cover, and they're doing it with brooms and mops. And they had asked if we would take a look at getting a floor cleaner. I think it was, was it 18, 20, I don't remember how wide it was.
20 or 22, I think.
Inches wide and it's a push behind battery operated deal. They, we had looked at them and they were going to give us a used one, a demo, a used one for $4,000. And we've talked to Ryan Miller, who takes care of janitorial type supplies for the Drakes. I think he takes, I don't know if he does it for the city or what, but anyway, he found us one that was a demo. And I was hoping, we were asking that if the Merit, the Merit Board pay half and if the city would pay half, being it is the city's building and it would stay with the building. And we'll get the Drakes who do our custodial or janitorial services at this time. What did I say? Was it, is he coming Wednesday, tomorrow, or is it Thursday morning?
Thursday.
I think it's Thursday morning, he was going to bring it over and do a demo and I was going to, Mr. Drake was going, I think he normally runs that machine, and we were going to do a demo. So basically, we're asking if you guys would approve taking care of half of it and we'll leave it there on premises.
How much?
It's four grand. Half of it would be 2,000. Comes from where?
Whatever Ryan Miller's company is, right?
No.
Oh, no, he's, where would it come out of? Do you want to come out of council budget or what would you want?
Well, I would, I would campaign over there at Centers, I'd have a council.
Out of council, okay.
I'd make a motion to pay half through the council fund. I have to accuse myself because I just brought it up, so.
I probably should too.
Yeah.
Motion is second. You're both accusing yourself being on the Merit Center board. All in favor?
Aye.
Close, same sign?
Scott. Looking good at that Merit Center. If any public hasn't been there, go check it out.
Okay, Jamie has a couple.
The old Northwest School is now the Merit Center.
I think, actually, I've had an associate in here today dropping off flyers for some college classes that they're going to be offering this fall out there, so just drop them off at the counter here.
I have applications for Madison Street Council event. So the first one that I have is a wedding reception for, submitted by Diane Orkies, and that is Saturday, July 16th, from 5:30 to 11:00. They'll be using the restroom and electricity, they'll have a DJ at the event. They're having a tent put up by Adams County Tent and Party Event Hall. Two poor guys will be serving beer, and they're getting liability insurance for this work.
You wouldn't do them all individually, or?
You want me to do the next one too, and then just?
What was the date on the wedding? I'm sorry.
The wedding is Saturday, July 16th. And then I also have Class of 1992 30th Class reunion, and that's July 23rd. That paperwork was turned in by Tanya Hamilton, and it is from 6:00 to 10:00, was set up being at 4:00. They will use the restroom from 4:00 to 11:00, and they also will have a DJ using the electricity. Two poor guys will be doing a bar, and they also will have this work for their insurance.
We can't stay up till 10 o'clock right now.
Scott, you graduated 30 years ago, Scott? That's hard to believe.
Probably should have resigned.
Jane, Mark?
Those are the only two I have.
I'll make a motion to accept the applications for the plaza.
I second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, same sign? Thank you.
I have a quick question. Should we come up with a way to approve events that come in after hours, like the last one?
How, the emailer?
Yeah.
What, what's that?
The one for the Memorial Day.
Oh.
That was an official event, right?
Right. She's talking about.
There's a street closure for the Memorial Day.
Do we even need to be a part of that, or do we need to come up with the things we need to be a part of and things we don't need to be a part of, or?
We may consider looking at even, you know, looking back since Madison Street has been open, so since 2017 or 18, and what kind of annual events take place. And you could almost do a blanket resolution once a year.
The Memorial Day event was the same event they've been doing for a long time.
Yeah, and the street closure. It wasn't.
They just didn't come before the city till the last night.
Okay. So, I mean, it could, you know, at some point, we could just kind of assemble a list of annual events that we do a blanket approval that that is covered, but.
But like Wiley said, he likes to know, likes to know that things are going on, but like that one, we got biased and we couldn't do it right, so probably should do it right. I just wondered if there's a way to make sure it fit that.
I mean, you could, like, said you do, like, a resolution that if it's going to have this, 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 and this, that she can approve it without coming to council.
Kind of the list of events, like these things are happening.
And if it was something she questioned, she could bring the council.
If it's street closings and things like that, maybe this, you know, it should come before council, but.
And they all require multiple vendors from.
Right.
Department.
And that could be a part of the resolution too, is if all the departments signed off on it, they're fine with it. I mean, that.
Write something out, Jamie.
In your free time.
It's a good problem, lots of events.
Yes, yes.
Or I can work with you on.
Yeah, I think that you would.
If you get me a list of events, we can work together to put some criteria.
Do you want to stay up here?
Do you want me to talk about?
Yeah, Stephanie Zimmerman, is that what we're going to talk about?
Yes.
From Common Ground Church, they have an after-school program that they were running for a little while. I think, there's a couple of different things here. They're looking for a place to run it. I think Monroe has a, like, a House 114. It's a place where some of the kids can go after school when they're in high school. You know, we have boys and girls club up to a certain age, but kids that aren't in sports and things like that, they're wanting to move it out of Common Ground, looking, they're trying to find out if there's an area or a place. So we're just trying to get out there to think about it right now, if you can think of anything. They did, they do some pretty cool things with, a lot of their life lessons, a lot of the classes they have, it might be, they'll bring in a mechanic to talk about their car and how to take care of it. They'll bring in somebody from the bank to talk about financing and how to budget. They might bring somebody from an insurance company to talk about insurance and what it all entails. A lot of good life lessons for these kids that they're not getting maybe from their parents or from the schools. So I think it's a great idea, that's one side of it. It's just something to think about if we can think of a place that we could help them with. That just wasn't great, having kids walk across 224 and up Belmont Road to get there. The other thing was, which I think is a great idea, is she wants to bring more, like, high school kids up, or even younger kids, up to the concerts and events. So she was looking at, is there an area that we could possibly rope off or have something that where kids, because they obviously probably don't want to hang out with their parents up there at a certain age, but somewhere they can have fun and enjoy the concerts and other things and be away from everyone else but still hear the concerts. She has some games, like, she can bring cornhole and Gaga pit and all these things and just, she's like, kind of like a kid zone, a safe kid zone.
Focused on more of like the high school age kids, to get them out there at the concerts and have a safe place for them to be.
I walked around with her the other day, we walked all around Madison, by the courthouse and back here, and, you know, the parking lots back here and the grass area down there, just trying to come up with some ideas of a place they could do something like that. So she kind of, she, she was going to be here, she ended up testing positive for COVID a few days ago and said she can't come now, so. She's just looking for us to maybe help her come up with an area or something that could work. We even talked about, she wants to have some games and some prizes and stuff, so maybe sponsors, when they sponsor a band, a little bit, maybe a little bit extra to help give those kids vouchers to go to the food trucks or something, you know, something like that. So if it was somewhere where they could get to the food trucks safely and just get the kids more involved in our events. So think about it when you walk around, maybe for the concert this Thursday, look around and think of an area that might be good to have some of the kids around. Sorry, I kind of.
Yeah.
I tried to say it all.
You've already covered.
Is that good? Anything you want to add?
Nope.
Sorry. It's not a fun day, is it?
No.
No, no, I thought she said the third, after Sunday. Wait a minute.
Jeremy, talk about crossing paving grant. For the next round, I guess.
Sometime in the next probably thirty to forty-five days, there will be twenty-two dash two community crossing, all projects. Just kinda curious, see if you guys are interested in going again. We're getting ready, probably within sixty days of completing twenty-one dash two. So we'll wait it out, one round for eligible. You guys wanna go again? Boy, gas prices so far right now, I'm sure there's gonna be a sizable pot to go after getting a share. A lot of that money settling on gas prices and prices and stuff, so.
Are we still seventy-five, twenty-five?
Yes.
Yeah.
I think we better do it, guys.
Yeah, we're about a carload under.
Is that right?
A carload of people.
One thing Jeremy and I have been talking to about, and we've had an engineering firm come in and talk about it, is one of the ways you can also use community crossings that we haven't yet is that if you're doing a street, you can also do a trail with it or a path. I don't know if it's what, it's, there's a difference when they're called a trail or a path, right? But, you know, I know one goal of mine is to get our trail system expanded. You know, it's, it's great, it's wonderful. Our partner does an awesome job with it, but I'd love to see it get to more areas. I would love to see it out to the Merit Center and the Rev complex. I think it'd be great to see kids be able to get on that trail and go all the way across town safely. So we've ridden around trying to look at some trails, paths, and if there's, with community crossings, if a street's been done in the last, you know.
Twelve years.
Twelve years, you can't, you know, you can't use that money for it. But they can do sections of it. So if our goal is to get that trail to different areas, you know, through those community crossings, you do the road, you can do the trail with it. So it's a thought. Jeremy knows a lot more about this than I do, but I've just had a couple engineering firms bring it up and say, hey, there, you could do this also. And I'd love to see more trail, more, our trail expanded.
One of the challenges, only a common problem that you're in, is your right of way. If you ever eliminate right of way in those areas, you won't, you won't be eligible for it.
Right.
Unless you go work on it outside of it, bring it back to where you have right of way whenever you apply for it.
Right.
Same way federally.
What areas would you want to target with the new batch of money?
There, there's several streets left that need to be paved. There's, you know, Dan's, Dan has talked about trail, trailways and stuff, so. It's just citywide, it's overall four or five blocks of the, of the street, or of the city, so.
I'm with Craig, as long as the state still offer and they pay seventy-five percent and we pay twenty-five, we should maximize it.
Definitely. Because, you know, every now and then months, you're gonna see a huge number of people paving, you know, once we get past twenty, twenty-one dash two.
So we can make it, we could approve this tonight and then work out the plan of what we would want to do?
We'd work out the plan. We would need to honestly get a firm on board, which we can work out over the next couple meetings. To decide who we want to use. And all that is, is just helping with the estimates and stuff. About the estimates, so we know we're asking for enough money.
We've used the same firm the last couple times, haven't we? Been successful, or was it?
The last, the last time we did, yes. I'm extremely happy with them. The one we had prior to, I'm, I'm not so pleased with their performance, so. I can bring you a list of streets, you know, and I can sit down and talk about more about the trail and stuff to figure out if, would you have right of way for that? Or if we don't have right of way, someone wanna do the street and then attack the trail with local funds, you know, that is also an option.
I'd like you and Dan to sit down and figure out areas you think are most important, but I'd make a motion to move forward that we do wanna.
I'll second.
You know, there is a lot of bringing it up tonight, it won't be a tight schedule once. You know, they do give you thirty days to get your application in. I, I wanna get it ahead of that thirty days so we can have a little time to figure it out, so.
You've got a map of what we've done in the last twelve years, too.
Yeah.
You've got a map, why don't you get, get with us or let us come and look at it. So it, it, the street garage or what is it?
I actually have it. I pulled it up on screen in the next meeting.
Okay.
You can see where, where we've been. See, it's color coded.
Right.
So what happened. I should be able to plug it in and then.
Do we have crack sealing lined up this year yet?
Probably within the next month or so.
Okay.
It'd be another huge crack. So, well, we have a crack seal for a couple of years, but it, it's a huge contract also. The majority of the paving is east of the river. The community crossings are some center, they're some south, so you don't see a lot this year. We're definitely headed in the right direction. I was a little wary about this community crossings in the beginning, this program in general, but more and more, I stand up for it. And I believe we take that bait and chip it on along the way.
Okay, so a motion in second to move forward with the grant. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose same sign. Okay. Do you have anything else to come up with?
Yeah, I, I just went to my deputy, my second deputy, Robbie Weddington, will be resigning July first. So I need to make her resignation letter of matter of record. And then, I can have a motion to do that. And then I, and then authorization to refill that position. I have posted the job already. The deadline for the application is Friday at noon. So I still need to make the resignation letter of matter of record and approval from council.
Two different. Make the resignation a matter of record.
Motion in second. Motion in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose same sign.
The hire, matter of record.
Approval.
You're hiring.
Thank you.
Second. Motion in second to approve the hiring. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose same sign. Okay.
The Kater Rotary Club has approached the city. I believe last year they did a Queen of Parts drawing during the summer concert series on Madison Street Plaza. They, it sounds like Rotary's done this for multiple years, but the Indiana Gaming Commission, their charity gaming division, has adjusted rules as they often do and is requiring additional information from the Rotary Club that requires the city to submit either a lease or a writing acknowledging that the Rotary Club has authorization to be present and conduct a licensed gaming activity on site. So it's asked, asked for approval to be able to work with Rotary Club and, and get that kind of a writing or lease agreement done. Entertain a motion on that.
I'll make a motion to allow you to work on.
Second. So matters is motion to, to the lease or to give the authority for them to do the gaming on there. Just write a letter, right? That's all we have to do.
All we have to do is write a lease or a writing and I'll work with Brian Clements, with the Rotary Club is who contacted me. So I would coordinate efforts with him and provide necessary writing.
Okay, so.
To accommodate.
Motion in second, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose same sign.
Maybe motion in second, I didn't get it, I'm sorry.
Scott and Tyler. Scott and Tyler.
The only other thing I have is just a reminder to everybody, the Sculpture Tour, the events, the unbankable weekend. Thursday night, the concert, Chamber has Sweetwater All-Stars down there, who's always a really fun band. The same night, Sculpture Tour will be recognizing the sponsors and the artists in a reception across the street on Madison Street. That's Thursday night and then Friday, our city crews will be busy installing sculptures. We'll play an air art contest during the day and then the, the rest of the Sculpture Tour events that night. So please come out and enjoy the, the events, followed by the, the Wildflowers event on, on Madison Street Saturday also. So we have a weekend full of events. Excited to see that. And the Fire with Fairies, yes. That is ten to two, I believe.
Correct.
Out at, behind the Rev complex. So that's a very good event, too. I think that was well attended last year. Department heads, Jeremy?
I don't believe I have anything other than we are working with Sculpture Tour this week. You know, we set up the move base turnaround earlier in the week. Yeah, the, the My Red, the last week or so, you may want to stop out there and see the progress. Our workers are finally, have left the property. After four years of being out there. That project is nearly completed. We will complete the south block within the next probably twenty-four to thirty-six hours. And then they will continue to, next Tuesday. And they should have had that work, it'll be all paid, hopefully by next Thursday, Friday, probably. And we're just getting all the touch-up work, so. Little minor landscaping work in islands, a little mulching, a little raking. Hopefully some trees, replacing some of the trees that got cut down. So a lot of little things going on. It's nice to be able to get back to our daily calls, you know, from people that, you know, they had, you just, this is what we do, that's what we've done.
Yep.
What we can do more top of answer those calls.
Brad? Tony? Jeff?
Yeah, on Thursday mornings from eight to eleven-thirty, we've opened up the station for our youth tours to come in, so they can stop at any time between eight and eleven-thirty, take a tour of the station.
Cool. Thank you for doing that. Kurt?
Jake, nobody's noticed, construction has started at one thirty-eight North Second Street. At this point in time, we don't know what the timeline is yet, or if it's gonna get into thirty-five. We have discovered a few items that we weren't aware of, that we're dealing with. They do have it blocked off, kind of closed quarters down there. Have to give everybody that goes through there to kinda see where the workers out there are working. At some point in time, it's not a question of if, but when, we're gonna have to shut down the street for a day or two. There's a problem, we need to get a crane in, do some work. So we'll try and get as much heads up as possible, whether on social media, newspaper, radio. We're connected to the center.
One thing I just thought of with you, Kurt. Kurt and Brad and Aaron have been crazy busy with nuisance violations. I think, and I'm just guessing numbers, but I think last year they did about a hundred and sixty-six or so abatements. I know as of a few weeks ago, there's been two hundred and fifty-some, and I'm sure.
Sixty plus right now.
So bear with them. Yes, we all wish that people would take care of their yards and get rid of their junk cars and get the junk out of their yards. We all wish that. There's a process that they must follow. We have a abandoned gas station on Thirteenth Street that looks terrible. They're going through the process. There was a change of ownership, which had to change who they sent the letters to and all these things. And it's, they are working hard on it. Believe me, they don't wanna see it any more than anyone else does. So I wanna commend you guys for the work you've been doing, because I know the stacks that you've been sending out and the police department's been delivering these abatements.
Yeah, the police have been taking the beating, just coming around.
Right, right. So I wanna thank both those departments for working hard. I just, I wish residents would take more pride in their, their own property, so that we don't have to do this and babysit. So thank you guys for, for helping clean up the town.
And to piggyback on that, you do need a permit on a lot of these things you're gonna add to your property. I had to call Monday morning, a fence went up over the weekend. There's no permit, it doesn't fall into our rules by any means, so. Call the city, come to City Hall, please.
Bill? Lenny?
Next Friday, Blake Brooks and K-9 Arco will graduate from K-9 Academy. We'll have two working dogs the following week. And I think we're very excited about that, so. As of right now, we have about ninety UTDs registered. Wow. Haven't heard any complaints.
I have.
Out there doing an edutainment and violating regulations, so. It's all going pretty good, there's a lot of positives, very little negative, but more positives, so.
I, on my way to this meeting, I saw our other dog working a stop, so. Thank you for those officers for doing that. Jamie? Anything else? Anything from council?
I was at recycling on Elm Street the other day and talked to one of the city employees and they're, they're getting, I'd like for you to put something in the newspaper, if you would. There was lawn chairs and, what else was there, Jeremy? There was all kinds of trash laying around there where people were throwing it into the recycling hoppers. Jeremy?
Yeah.
I mean, what, what kind of debris was it? Lawn chairs?
You, you were, you were there, I didn't see you.
Okay, anyway, I was, I was brought to my attention and, and the recycling, you know, we're trying to follow those codes because.
Elm Street?
Yeah, at the Elm Street. Yeah, where, where people go and do their recycling themselves.
Remind people that they're on camera, so smile, so the picture in the paper looks good?
Right.
Don't throw junk, yeah.
Yeah, and it, they're just, we get docked for it if they put trash in the recycling. We just like for them to follow the rules.
The rest of the residents are gonna have to pay for them if they're throwing junk in there.
Yeah.
Okay, anything for public?
Hi. Jason Broom, live here in town, three thirty-eight Mercer Avenue. You know, there's some things that can only be learned by visiting a location. So what we did today is we visited the JBS cattle slaughter facility in Plainwell, Michigan. It's about two and a half hours north of here. And we wanted to see the impact on the town. It is, to our knowledge, the nearest industrial scale cattle slaughter facility. You know, we decided jog one in Illinois, which is about seven hours away. It was a little bit too far for a road trip. The town is nice. Plainwell is about the size of Bern and everything there was well-maintained. We had lunch in a nice little restaurant just outside of town. The reason everything's nice is because the cattle slaughter facility is three-quarters of a mile outside of town. It's been there for over a hundred years. It was originally owned by Swift before Swift was purchased by JBS, which is a Brazilian company. About a half a mile from the cattle slaughter facility is the nearest, what you call group of houses or what the county would term that they're zoning or that's a built-up area. We did, however, see a lot of truck traffic and a lot of odor nuisances from that truck traffic. We have pictures for anybody that's interested, I can show you those after the meeting. Many of those animal trucks had manure splatter on them. And, you know, we were just trying to gather as much information as we could. So we called the truck wash facility. How does this work? You know, we want to go into this with just a, an understanding that we're trying to gather as much information as we can. We did, for example, find out that it's not common practice to wash out a truck after every use. That usually, the gentleman I talked to on the phone for about five minutes said, two to three times, so about every other time. He said it's bad for the animals to have too much manure in there, but that there is manure that spills out as the trucks are operating through the town. And we did witness one go through the core of downtown. As we all know. As we all know, prescribed routes can change depending on how roads are closed and being worked on, those types of things. And, you know, so typically the trucks are washed out every other. And there's really nothing of note within a half a mile of the facility. As I noted earlier, it's been there about 100 years or so, so there would have been plenty of opportunity for people to move nearby if they felt that that was a good place to locate something else. At the restaurant we ate at, I did notice that their fairly large industrial park has a sign with about, you know, 30, 40 business names on it. It was located far away from this JBS facility. So there were a couple houses within a half mile, but nothing really we met. And we did talk to local business owners or people, I should say working at the businesses. We talked to some neighbors in nearby houses. They said typically from the facility itself, they don't smell anything except for trucks and the trucks do go by. And again, the reason they don't smell anything is because the nearest houses, nearest groups of houses is about a half mile away, as you can see on satellite photos. They have extremely large onsite wastewater system. Their one bed, as I could measure on the mapping, was about 600 feet long. So I mean, it's huge. But I wanted to get closer because I want to understand what this process entails. Obviously, nobody's against beef here. I had Philly cheesesteak for lunch, it was delicious. But we just want to understand what are the negative externalities of a slaughterhouse, particularly in the city. And both, you know, I learned about these facilities from Rick's Florence himself after taking the tour at the proposed IO facility. And he mentioned Jocklin, Illinois. He mentioned Plainwell, Michigan, so we went to Plainwell. I couldn't get close to the facility to learn what I wanted to learn about the water treatment. And the more I think about it, that's what it should be. That this facility was set so far back from the nearest roads that I couldn't even learn what I wanted to learn. It's very isolated, which is the opposite of the proposed IO facility at the old Dean Hoo's back. At the facility itself, we smelled, and I couldn't tell whether it was the trucks or the facility itself, a quite noticeable stench of poop and puke. And the puke is from the awful, from the guts that are taken from the animal when they're slaughtered. So we want to learn as much as we can and have an honest and open mind. We all recognize that, you know, as I said, I had beef for lunch. We're not against the slaughter industry. We just want to remind the city council, and many citizens have already spoken to that effect, that this is not a facility that belongs within the city limits, particularly within just a couple hundred feet of existing residential houses. Are there any questions about our visit today?
I have one.
Sure.
You said it was three-quarters of a mile from the city?
Approximately three-quarters of a mile from the town. So that was us estimating based on online mapping.
And how far from the downtown, like where you ate?
About a mile. So I think the high school is like the closest, what I call civilization. And it is north of the JBS facility. So also the direction of the, helps to make sure that if there is any smell from the facility, it doesn't travel to the downtown.
So it didn't affect the downtown?
It didn't seem to affect the downtown of the people we talked to. And I think part of that is the prevailing wind. When we got there, it was still kind of raining, like it had just gotten done raining. So I don't think we had what I call worst-case scenario for smell.
And then the other, I guess the other question I had, the wastewater you're talking about, are you talking in-ground lagoons that you saw 600 feet wide? Because I wouldn't think that would pay.
Yeah, I saw them on online mapping. I could barely get a view of them because the nearest country roads are, you know, put you about a half mile away.
But they were lagoons?
I couldn't tell. I'm, like I said, I'm not familiar with the wastewater process online. It looks like, you know, something that's about 600 feet, 820 feet that's covered in black tar. But I don't know the process. I don't.
In your research, Jason, do you know how many they process a day?
I called them the other day. They process 1,800 a day. So it's a significant facility. I mean, obviously, you know, it'd be perfect if we could find one that's proposing, you know, between 250 and 500, like, you know. We've had both numbers for IO, you know, on one hand, they say 250 a day, on the other hand, they say 30 an hour, and that they're going to work for approximately 16 hours. So, you know, 250 to 500 is what we're estimating. So, but there's no facilities that size right nearby. So, but again, the main point is that Plainwell was a nice community because the slaughter facility was outside of town. And I just, I really want to emphasize that point, that this type of facility is not something that belongs, you know, 200 feet from residential housing. And the houses were there first. You know, it'd be different if this was just reverting back to a slaughter plant. But ice cream has, you know, quite different negative externalities from animal's water.
Thanks for taking that tour, that visit.
Thank you.
Thanks. Anybody else from public?
Two things. I'm Darlene, by Global, and my child Makai goes to Common Ground, so I just wanted to push that for Common Ground because he does come up to with me on Thursday nights if you guys could help any way possible to help these kids find something to do. Mine is going to be a freshman and he does not want to sit with mom and listen to music some nights. They do a lot of walking around. They end up at the O-27 a lot because they have the golf there and they can hang out at the picnic table. So that's my plug one for the Common Ground use, or even the de-hater use, if we can do something to get him back uptown. Makai really likes it, he just does not want to sit with mom. And I understand that. Number two, October 21, I had a classroom reunion uptown and it was a great place. And my husband and I had to get liability insurance to serve alcohol. And we were pretty much responsible for the people that showed up at our classroom reunion. I think we had 75 there because of the drinking. And so I'm a little concerned because Thursday night at the concert, I saw a lot of our council members drinking. And I just want to know, do they carry their own liability when they're drinking, when they leave the, when they leave the party up there? Or are they covered under the city? I'm just really concerned about that because a lot of them were drinking and it wasn't one, it was two. Quite a few drank in three and four. And I'm just curious how, if I'm as a citizen, have to pay to have a party uptown and I'm covering, and I'm having to cover 75 on my homeowner's insurance through my insurance company, my husband and I did, who takes care of you guys?
The concert is nothing to do with the city. The Chamber of Commerce runs that and they have their own liability insurance. I think a lot of misconception around the concerts is the city puts them on. The Chamber of Main Street does a good job. They go get all the funds, they provide all the insurance for these events. And I, they have all the insurance, so it's not anything to do with the city. They're carrying the liability just like you had to, but they're business or a non-profit doing the same thing.
So if someone's drinking uptown and then they get in a car and they die, then you're saying the Chamber's responsible?
Do you know how liquor licenses work?
No.
What if someone goes to a restaurant and has two or three beers? There's bartenders, there's bartenders that are licensed and paid to have that. That's why they pay to have bartenders there. It's on their license.
Yeah, we had to pay.
If they oversee somebody. It's just like a restaurant.
Okay. I was just, I was just, I saw something and I was asking because I did not know.
Yep.
Thank you.
Anybody else from the public?
Hi. Um, I'm.
Nope.
I'm Jean Porter Broom and live at 1717 Winchester Road. De-haters within the city limits. And I will along with Jason and Charlie today through the facility. And I think what I wanted to stress was that that facility is about five times the processing that IO would be. Okay? So it is quite substantially bigger. But when we started this process of discussing a slaughterhouse within the city limits, there were references to Manly Meat in Lyndrick, you know, when they did processing. And we've been in contact with families several times then over the last couple of months, just asking questions, that sort of thing. IO is 50 times bigger than Manly Meat weekly outlook. 50. There's no, there's no comparison. 50 times. We always think about that. IO, yes, JBS, yes, is at least five times bigger than IO. Five times. Manly is 50 times smaller than IO.
It is hard to reference because Craig and Wiley went to a facility in Ohio. I don't know what town was that. Two facilities. That is in between JBS and Manly Meat.
But they only did canning of beef.
Right.
They did no slaughter.
Right.
It was processing already, you know, brought in.
Are you talking about the place we went?
I'm talking about that, the canning facility that was beef?
No, they had, they unloaded beef and slaughtered right there.
Okay. How many head a day then?
I don't know how many head a day. We took all the city department heads with us.
Okay.
Did, do you guys know how many they slaughtered? I mean, we saw a couple of cows in the back where they brought them in and staged them and they had a.
There was, there was probably about three, I don't know, there's probably about 300 head of that facility, but I don't know how many they slaughtered today.
I know from what Rick said on the tour is that this proposed facility in Philly should be the largest in either Indiana or Ohio as far as number of head problems per day. So that's why it's hard to find a, trying to find a comfortably sized facility.
And I think we all would love to see a facility just like this. There isn't a facility just like this within a big area.
In that place, I.
Can you, can you, can you come up here and say your name and your address?
My name is Jan Koch. My name is Jan Corning and I struggled with that because we went the same day that Coach Shaw and Wiley went, because they even asked me about it at the tour that we did, I don't know, a week or two after that. And I saw two cows at the house next door, which I presumed was part of the canning factory, but I really don't know that. And I went inside to see what they had and talked to a man who was a butcher. And they had no meat, but maybe a few steaks in there. But I never saw no 300 head of cattle. So I'm not sure where they were at. Can you?
They were in the barns in the back. There was three barns back there. There was probably.
And they let you in the barn?
No, we drove by, we'd see, you know, I mean.
Because he said they did very little butchering there. But, you know, but they can. So I just think that should be clarified then. And I'll give them a call because I think that's misleading. And I wanted to, you know, when we're doing this, I guess I, we really need to keep the facts, the, because all they were doing that day was canning. They were not butchering. Because I even asked the man in the store.
Okay. Anybody else from the public?
Thank you. Thank you.
Yep. Person to pay the fines?
Any other public?
Hi, I'm Mike Webb. I'm 246 South Second Street, Commissioner. I just want to discuss a couple of things that were just mentioned about the Plainwell facility. It is south of Plainwell. The prevailing wind, nine and a half months out of the year, direct canny smells directly away from the town. Whereas what we're talking about here, nine and a half months out of the year, the prevailing winds are going to direct any smells directly into town on a direct line to downtown. I also do want to mention, JBS Plainwell in particular, has a, and this is as far back as I was able to look while I'm sitting back there. The last 12 quarters, so for the last three years, they have every single quarter violated Clean Water Act. The Michigan Environmental Agency, Eagle is the name of it, is very similar to Iden. And we're hearing a lot about how Iden is going to be monitoring things here so they won't be able to violate. Eagle is underfunded just like Iden is. And they've gone 12 consecutive quarters, that's three years, violating Clean Water Act every single quarter. And they are currently on informal compliance and there's no actions being taken to do anything about it. So please understand that when you're hearing things about Iden is going to be monitoring this facility, Iden is even more underfunded than Michigan's environmental organization is. The chances of a small town like ours having a, having some compliance, officers coming out to force compliance are very small. I've got records and I'll be glad to provide them to anybody that wants and also be glad to provide to the council as well. I've got records of many facilities here in Indiana in that, in that business that have continual and serious violations and there's nothing being done to stop them. So they continue and they continue and they continue. So any argument that Iden is going to keep this facility in check is simply unfounded. There's simply no evidence of that, that Iden has the capacity and inspectors, Iden has the capacity or the ability in order to keep places from having continual violations. I've got lists of plenty of different places in Indiana where that took place.
Do you have any lists of other industries and how they're staying up with the Clean Water Act?
Why would you like me to research as far as other, I mean, there's other industries, certainly. There's pharmaceutical companies that have violations, there's other, other ones. But, you know, for example, I looked around around town based on conversation that we had, for example, I looked at Thunderbird. There was a single, single violation of the Clean Air Act in three years. So, and it's $500 fine, paid, resolved, corrected. But I'm not seeing that in that industry when I'm looking. I have not found any facilities and I'm not saying you won't be able to find a facility in the meat slaughter business. I've not found one without violations in the last three years. Echo.upa.gov keeps track of Clean Water Act violations, Clean Air Act violations.
Do the deans have violations?
I haven't looked back.
I'm just curious.
Three years ago, so I'm not, I haven't seen the dean's one. Assuming dean did have some, you had represented that dean had had some water issues that the city had been fined for and then you had to pass the fines back to them.
Not water, wastewater.
Yeah. So anyway, I just wanted to stress, the location is key with the prevailing winds because this, again, facility may be perfect for them, but that operating there is not perfect for us because the facility is in a position where we're all downwind of it. And that is a significant difference from what the case is in Plainwell. Thank you.
Any other public?
My name is Susan Valman and I live at 1016 Monroe Street. I live in this area and I know that for the past year, we've had one of the lowest unemployment rates in this area. I know recently, Choban County beat us in the unemployment race. But when I sit here and listen to Hoosier Patterson saying that they're having trouble getting workers, I don't want a slaughterhouse in my community that enforces workers from somewhere else and buckets them in. I mean, I love de-hater, what we've done in December and the progress we've made. I just feel, I just can't fathom people coming from elsewhere, from foreign countries who have no other options maybe for employment and coming here.
What do you mean by that?
There's a group in Fort Wayne that I understand that they, you know, like, like when we used to butcher, the ferments used to butcher, come down and get a lot of the small bladders and livers and stuff from those animals. Those people are interested in working as.
What do you mean by those people? I'm asking.
The vermes, it's vermes.
Because I think Smith Brothers and Burn, they employ a great deal of those vermes. Is that right, Jen?
Twenty. At least twenty, Steve, employed, and I was looking for more.
But if this is to benefit our community, I would like our community members to have, you know, miss those jobs. Thank you.
Yep.
Hi, my name's Margaret and, you know, I've been reading about everything in the paper and I took a tour of the facility where they're coming in. And I understand the concerns about the smell and the different people coming in and everything. The people, you know, I don't know much about a slaughterhouse. I mean, I've read a lot on the internet, I've heard what everybody said. And I think there are concerns for smell and wastewater. But that's a food industry place in an industrial area that was built near the town. Something's coming in there. And most things in the food industry are smelling. And most things in the food industry are going to smell. You know, whether it's a dog food plant or a slaughter house, or whatever we put in there, it's going to smell. So, you know, when I look at the truck traffic, there's tons of trucks full of animals going through the town every day. And, you know, going through the facility, it's set up nicely for him. So I can see kind of both sides, but I do think we need to keep in mind that what goes in there could be food, is probably going to be food because it's expensive to build a brand new food plant. And whatever goes in there, we're going to have probably the concern of smell and wastewater. Does that make sense? So I just think it's something to think about, just because, you know, if it's not a slaughter house and it's something else, like a dog food or a cat food or a chicken place or whatever, there's going to be odor and there's going to be wastewater. And there's still going to be animal parts involved, whether it's blood or guts or whatever. Does that make sense?
Yep.
So that's just what I thought about taking the tour. Okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else?
Anyone else?
Hi, my name's Charlie Green, 1717 Winchester Road. And I was on the trip today and it was an interesting trip, nice little town. Right at City Hall, they've got a sign that says, "Don't eat the fish." The place that we visited today is upstream from them because they had the water violations that was previously brought up by Mike. And so right in their own job, they have to warn people about that. So the other thing is, is that there, certainly these kind of places exist, they have to exist, we all like to, we like the product, we do. But right now, and this is probably the main issue, it's illegal to do this here. There's a reason that that law's been around for a hundred years. It's because back in the old days, anybody could just about do what they wanted to and guys before you, gals before you that came along and did this, probably saw the need to have that not in the city. We're not against facilities, he can go anywhere he wants and build one of these. But I think he's looking for a sucker and I just hope that's not Decatur, Indiana. We guys, we have built a wonderful city, we have, you guys have been wonderful, our city's wonderful. Got a lot of things going on and there's a lot of positive people here. Jean and I have been privy to be next to people when they come here and they visit the sculpture tour and they go, "How did you do this?" Well, we did it with good citizens and good government and a lot of cooperation. And that's the way that we like it. And when we're here trying to say that it might not matter if somebody's house got you goes down, where it might matter a lot if we get three hundred thousand dollars in water revenue, come on. That isn't anything compared to these people that put their life and their life savings and their forty years of working somewhere out by Deer Run and their house is worth a hundred and fifty thousand dollars and it loses thirty to forty percent of its value and you worry about water revenue? Well, what's weird about that is, is over a period of time, as those house revenues go down, and that's a proven fact, that's just not me talking. As that goes down, pretty soon the assessed valuation goes down and you're with less revenue than what you had before. Three hundred thousand dollars in water revenue doesn't, I don't know if the profit margin is going to take them in that much money. But if it's, if it's only, if they make clear the time you pay all the labor and do whatever that you do, the revenue is three, forty thousand dollars in cars that flow to the city. All this money, there's expenses we run, that's useless. And the idea that that's going to make that much difference is, seems so irrelevant if you've got hundreds of houses in, within a given area. Some of those houses are just within a few hundred feet of that facility out there. So anyway, we need to be reminded that there's a lot of wisdom that's been passed down from our forefathers that came here and the gals too and that, that there's a reason that exists. And also, you know, we did a survey, in four days we got seven hundred and fifty signatures against this. I'm sorry, not a survey, it's about fish making. And we know that, from talking to most of the people, and you guys talk in different circles than we do, but I'm still, I'm here to tell you that ninety-five percent of the people we talk to are against this. And that's why you guys are here and you need to represent them. Thank you.
Okay. Motion to pay the claims.
I'll make a motion to pay the claims.
Second. Motion to second to pay the claims, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose same side.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn first.
Second.